Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission on September 19th, 2023. I call this meeting to order, and I'll note for the record that we do have a quorum here this morning with the absence of Commissioner Karski, who's ill today. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence their cell phones, and if you plan to speak at public comment today, it would be great if you could sign in the signup sheet in the corner, and that you can then record your address there, and you won't have to say it publicly. All right. With that, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, before we get to our regular agenda, I would like to invite Doug Blomker, our Safety Committee Chair, to come forward. If you just want to come to the podium, I'm going to talk about the awards you're getting, and then I'll come out and give them to you, okay? So Doug is here to accept on behalf of the entire county in his role as the Safety Committee Chair. The two awards that were awarded to Minnehaha County last week at the state convention, we received the, both the gold and the platinum level award for the work we've done on keeping injuries down at the county. So Doug, I don't know if you want to say a couple of words while I walk out to give you these awards.
I just want to thank all the committee members. This is a group effort, so I'm just kind of the face here this morning, but we've got a great committee that works very hard and very diligently to make this happen, and just the other county employees that do the right thing, and they're safe every day when they're doing their jobs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lots of hard work here. Thank you. Thanks for coming. So that takes us to our regular agenda. I'd consider a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to consent agenda. Is there anyone here from the public today who would like to comment on anything on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing no one. Is there any request by anyone on the commission to remove any item from the consent agenda? Also seeing no one. I would then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. So that takes us to regular business. The first item, item nine, is a public hearing on an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to deny a CUP number 23-43 to allow a rubble dump tree grinding operation on the property legally described as the northwest quarter, section 35, Township 10, Township 101 North, R 51 West. Mason, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. As explained, the County Planning Office did receive an appeal of the County Planning Commission's decision to deny the tree grinding operation at the subject property. This subject property is located approximately four miles west of Sioux Falls at the intersection of 267th Street and 464th Avenue. The item was heard by the Planning Commission at their meeting on August 28th, 2023. Several neighbors to the proposed operation and as well as other concerned citizens were present at the meeting and stated their opposition. Some of the concerns brought up were the traffic issues, garbage along the road, and the potential for dust and noise nuisances from the tree grinding. After listening to the public input, the Planning Commission did vote to deny the proposed rubble dump operation with a vote of three to two. The main concern brought up by the Planning Commission regarded the traffic along 267th Street. Given this concern, the petitioner is requesting that the county commission today defer action on this request until they can complete the required traffic study that was required as a condition of approval in the staff report. And I will just go through some quick pictures here of the property. So here is the property. It's a pretty familiar property for the commission and for planning staff as of now. Earlier this year, the same petitioner did request for the same operation using access off of 464th Street, right where my cursor is here. This is essentially the same operation with the access being off of 267th Streets via this existing access onto the county highway. And I'll just go through the site plan and some pictures here, so you can see where there'd be the dimensional wood and the trees piles, and then the access off of the county highway. Here's looking to the northeast, so this would be the western portion of the operation looking to the access between the trees there. And then here's looking south towards the Sioux Falls landfill with this wetland area there that is specifically excluded from the site plan. And then here's looking at the actual access. This is looking directly south, so this is the gap in the trees where the access would be down to the operation. This is looking to the north, up along the county highway, and you can see there would need to be improvements on this existing access in order to be used for the operation. So here's looking directly east. This tree line right here would be the start of the subdivision, the Countryville Estates subdivision that is located approximately between a quarter mile and a half mile to the east of the property. And then here is looking to the west with the Sioux Falls landfill access there, about a quarter mile, and then the nearest property directly across the road there is just on the edge of that picture. So with that, the Minnehaha County Commission can vote to uphold, amend, or defer action on the Planning Commission's denial decision of CUP 2343, and I am available for any questions from you. Let's go back up to the side plane here.
All right. Any questions for Mason? All right. I will allow the proponents, if they are here, if there's anybody here, to speak on behalf of this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Cheddar from the Boyce Law Firm here on behalf of Mueller Palets. The applicant, Margie Mueller, is present as well, can answer questions. As Mason mentioned, this is a site that should be familiar to you. We discussed this a couple of months ago, back in June, at which point in time we were in the midst of some conversations with the city of Sioux Falls about that access off of 464. That eventually proved fruitless. We explored some other options that the cities put forth and considered those, and as they were being considered, one by one, the city took those options off the table. So we come before you today considering the same site with different access because we were not able to reach an agreement with the city to have access off of 464. So we're seeking on this application access off of 267th, which is West 41st Street. We recognize that traffic is an issue here and recognize that a traffic study is necessary to completely review and understand the impact of this proposal. So our request today is that you defer action on this matter until such time as we can obtain a traffic study and better understand that site. As many of you may be aware, there's a second site that's currently been applied for for conditional use permit that's approximately half a mile to the west of this location. That location is under review next week or at a hearing next week with the Planning Commission. In speaking with Mr. Greco, assuming there's an appeal from that next week, that matter would be heard in the third week of October or so. The traffic study for the current site nearest the dump, which I'll call the Pine Knoll Site, they're the property owner, we won't have a traffic study from that locate, for that location until late October or perhaps early November. So my request would be that we defer action on this until November. That way, we A) have a traffic study, and B) it's quite possible that the process runs its course on the site farther to the west. That owner is ALS. I'll call that the ALS site. Some people might call it the Boomsma Site. Glenn Boomsma is the attorney representing the ALS owner. That site can then run its course, and it's quite possible that if that site's conditional use permit is approved in their intervening weeks, the applicant would withdraw the conditional use permit that's before you today, and a future hearing would not ever be necessary. So happy to answer questions, but I think it's important that those procedural steps and the big pictures available to all of you and to members of the public, we're not trying to be cute or hide the ball. We've worked very hard to find a site that works for this use. We think we found a great general location and need to find the precise location that makes the most sense. I know in speaking to county personnel that the traffic for the Pine Knoll Site being east of the dump turnoff is of a heightened concern, where if you get west of the dump turnoff to the ALS site, half a mile to the west, traffic is less of a concern because you would not be competing with and turning off in front of landfill traffic coming from the city of Sioux Falls in its greater numbers. Happy to answer your questions. Otherwise, I'll conclude my comments.
All right. Are there any questions right now for Mr. Cheddar? Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, I know a lot of you are here to speak in opposition to this, and I'm going to give you a chance to do that. If you have one spokesman, it would be helpful. We would prefer that you not repeat comments, and as you've heard, it's quite likely that we aren't going to take action on this today at all. And so you're welcome to speak now, but if we end up deferring this, then you're going to end up coming back. So I'm just wanting you to understand that. There is not going to be any extra time for anybody that's appointed a spokesman. Everybody gets the same amount of time, but I am going to encourage people that have, are repeating something that's already been said, I'm going to encourage them to be done because we don't need to hear the same thing multiple times, okay? I know some of you have been here already once, and I apologize that this is how this process is playing out, because I know some of you have missed work to be here, and I apologize for that. But so if you have a question, you can ask it when you come forward to the podium. I can't really take questions from the floor, okay? All right. With that, if there's somebody who'd like to speak in opposition to this matter, you don't need to raise your hand. You can just come forward. But you do need to identify yourself, but you don't have to give your address if you've signed in over there. All right. Thanks.
Glenn Firstenberg, and I've already signed in. I guess, you know, I don't like speaking in front of people. It's one of the things I hate the most. Having said that, I feel it's my civic duty to do this. And here we are, these people applied, or the first, I don't know when they applied, but they have had since April in front of the county commission or planning and zoning a chance to get the plan together, propose a plan to you folks, deliver it, and then you guys make an informed decision. April, May, June, July, August, September, five months, we've had to take off work, have meetings, come here. You guys have had to waste your time with this. They are not prepared. I think this needs to be denied. They need to reapply, get their stuff together, and come forward to the commission and planning zoning when they're ready to go. You know, it was back in, back in July, I believe, one of the county commissioners had said to Mueller Palets, "They better have their ducks in a row, or they're going to deny the permit." At what point in time, or first of all, I'm sure they met, that you guys met August of 2023. I don't know if they realized it or not, but here we're in September, end of September. We're going to be in October, and we're still now going to defer, have a traffic study. The traffic study should have been done back in March before this all goes on. So we're all informed. So you're informed. Mr. Kipley had stated at planning zoning that many of the neighbors are concerned about the unknowns, and that's correct. We are concerned about the unknowns. We still don't know, we still don't have a plan. Everything gets changed. Everything gets kicked, the can gets kicked down the road. At what time, at what point in time do we stop kicking the can down the road? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this matter? No one? Okay. Is there any rebuttal on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can appreciate that sentiment, but just for two short minutes, as soon as we were told by the planning staff a traffic study would be required for this different layout with access off of 267th, we reached out to local engineering firms to get that process started. I can appreciate the neighborhood's frustration that this has been ongoing. Mueller Palets shares the frustration because we've similarly gotten a bit of a runaround from some of our governmental entity neighbors here downtown Sioux Falls. So I think that a deferral makes the most sense. Mueller Palets has been diligently pursuing the sites and having to address concerns that have been raised by planning staff and by members of the public. So I appreciate a deferral. Thank you.
All right. I will turn it over to the commission. Questions? Commissioner Kipley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this does feel like deja vu all over again, so I can appreciate that sentiment. I think that's been one of the recurring themes here, both with sympathies towards Mueller Palets and to the residents nearby this location, is that they've been kind of getting the runaround of just, I think some of our initial feedback back at the outset of this was just some constructive feedback, taking out Mueller Palets at all, just that that roadway and that location gets some garbage in it naturally from just being near the landfill. And I think that was helpful feedback from the community because then they try to talk to the county, and the county points them to the city, the city points them to the sheriff, the sheriff points them highway super, like we have all these different jurisdictions that are all out there. And so that, I think that was a helpful lesson in how a constituent can kind of get lost in the shuffle of various government jurisdictions that want to pass the buck. I express my frustration with my counterparts at the city, at the Planning Commission level, that I thought some of the initial plans and a comprehensive solution there at that one turnoff would have been a good approach. I never got a great reason back from the city, and I think the reason I did hear from the city, I think they could have been, we sat at this body and basically had a joint deferral of, hey, let's give the city and Mueller Palets and the county staff, let's all give some time. I think one of our public commentators today said, you know, by August, we should, let's have our ducks in a row. And I think this body has frowned upon kicking the can down the road with multiple deferrals and not a clear plan, but I don't think that was the applicant's fault in this case. So I had some frustrations I expressed with the city of either finding a way to make this work or give a timely and a fast answer in the negative so that Mueller Palets could find an alternative. So the alternative here, I don't think is ideal. We talked at the level that this at least needs a traffic study, whether that would come with a conditional use permit granted and one of the conditions being a traffic study within the ultimate authority to the highway superintendent to ratify that. I had some qualms with that, but I think the time has played out such that now we have another alternative. So I'm in the camp of wanting to defer this item to at least marry it up and give the alternative location that I think should be as close to a win-win as we can get. So I'll be interested in my colleagues' comments on this one, but coming from the, as a liaison to the Planning Commission, that's just kind of my big picture overview on this topic, and I think we're maybe a couple of months away from having a solution that is of a better benefit to all concerned.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Benega.
Well, I'm not going to repeat what Joe has just indicated, and I do agree with him because I frankly just finished a building project and dealing with a government agency and trying to get building permits. All the site plans accomplished, all the studies done took forever, went through it multiple times, and frankly, this is kind of like making sausage. Unfortunately, the process is not very comfortable sometimes, but the reason for doing it is still on the table, and I am going to be supportive of a deferral.
Okay. Commissioner Blyenberg.
Thank you. I would agree with the sentiment already shared, and I would just like to add that I would hope that we would be able to come to a conclusion at the time that we, if we defer, that we would not prolong this process for the purpose of the landowners that live nearby for their.
Okay. So I hear support for a motion to defer this until November 7th, our first commission meeting in November. Is there somebody who wants to make a motion?
I'll make that my motion.
Sorry. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next public hearing, which is item 10. It's a public hearing for the appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to amend and approve a CUP number 606-07 to allow a gun club/sportsman's club on properties described as track one in the northwest quarter, northwest quarter and track one of the Garrettson Gun Club addition to the northwest quarter, all in section 23, Township 103 North, Range 47 West. Kevin, good morning.
Yes, good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. As you heard, the property was described, the location of the property is approximately 1.25 miles south of Garrettson at 48605 255th Street. You can maybe scroll down to the site here. So in 2006, the gun club was approved, an expansion from the small red box there to include the kind of L-shaped box around it to make a larger property, and added these gun ranges to it. Recently, a neighboring property owner raised concerns about ricochets of bullets that he's been hearing from the gun range. The Planning Commission held a review hearing as allowed by the zoning ordinance. The review hearing was on August 28th, 2023. Prior to the review hearing, the range prepared an NRA range tactical team to come and review the site. The tactical team noted in their report that due to the concrete construction baffles and the use of closed-circuit cameras at each shooting position, projectile escapement from the rifle and pistol ranges is unlikely. The report also further made one suggestion that the club has a written maintenance, operation, safety, and environmental plans as their suggestion to the club. When the Planning Commission heard the item, they reapproved the conditional use permit, adding a condition for the suggested plans to be required as part of the conditional use permit. Let's see here. I'll just show some photos that I took at a site visit towards the beginning of this whole process on June 9th. This is, you can see the concrete system that's used at the beginning of the range and downrange here. They were, the range was just starting to fill the backstops with a sand material to stop the projectiles of bullets. This is the short range, the handgun range or the pistol range. This is a photo of that angled concrete kind of bunker-like baffle at the beginning to direct the shots down and so that they don't go up into the air. This is a photo of the 200-yard range. I am standing up in this photo, and you can see that I can't even see the targets. In order to see the targets on this range, you would have to get down at the level of the platform here, and you can look downrange. You can see the baffles in place there and the side berms to stop the bullets there. The, I'll probably bring it back to the site. The 1999 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County does allow a recall and review procedure of conditional use permits. And the county commission, the process for reviewing follows essentially the same process for a new conditional use permit. As the action for the county commission is that they can uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission decision to reapprove conditional use permit 0607. I guess I am here for any other questions, otherwise it'll be a public hearing.
Any questions for Kevin? All right. Thank you, Kevin. So I'm going to allow the proponents to speak initially. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of this application? Good morning.
Good morning. Steve Bruce, I'm the president of the Garrettson Sportsman's Club. We have a written response to the appeal from Mr. Sands, and I guess I'd just like to ask, how much time do I have? It's a, I got about three pages to read here, so it might take a little longer than five minutes.
Read quickly.
Okay. We believe Mr. Sands to be an honorable person, concerned for the safety of his family and property. At the same time, we reject his statements in the appeal being inaccurate, outdated, speculative, selective, and inappropriate. We are also concerned by the timing of his petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission as he publicly stated hearing six ricochets over the course of the last 10 years and has not brought this matter to the commission until now. Mr. Sands has publicly stated the likelihood of he or his family or a building on his property being hit from a ricochet are effectively zero. At least four club members heard him make this statement after the recent Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The fact alone might be considered grounds to stop discussion on this issue and uphold the Planning and Zoning's updated CUP, conditional use permit. Item one. We must point out that hearing a ricochet is very different than producing a bullet that struck people, animals, building, or a vehicle on his property, as was the case with the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Range he references in conditional use permit. Other than Mr. Sands hearing a ricochet, no one has claimed we have had bullet escapement from our property in the 71 years at its current location. Mr. Sands is requesting regulations be applied to us based on hearing a ricochet, not from any physical evidence of a bullet on his property. The Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Range CUP was reviewed due to physical evidence of someone shooting over the backstops or berms, not due to hearing a ricochet. We believe that this is significantly different situation. The basis of Mr. Sands' original request that our CUP be revoked is appropriately satisfied by the Planning and Zoning Commission updated to our CUP. Item number two. Even though it is true no deadlines was given to us at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we have already stated, started to work on the documents and updated CUP requirements. These are not something that can be produced overnight or even in a few weeks. We want to do this right the first time so we are not challenged in a future commission meeting. We believe we already have practices that comply with the intent of the CUP, but do need time to put them together in written form. We believe at least the amount of time given to a paid government employee to create comprehensive manuals to be given to our volunteer board of directors for each manual requires the updated CUP. Item number three. Mr. Sands is entitled to his opinion of our NRA range evaluation report by an expert with over 15 years' experience evaluating ranges across the country. We disagree with his opinion and agree with the findings in the report. Item number three. Contrary to Mr. Sands' characterization, NRA range technical team advisors are recognized as experts across the country. Their volunteer status does not negate their expertise. Many volunteers in various occupations are the most experienced and knowledgeable in their respective areas. In addition to the range technical team advisor, which we're going to call RADA from now on, that was assigned, our case happens to be a retired engineer. He is also supervisor for the NRA range technical team program. Review reports of other RADA's to make sure they meet the stringent NRA standards. Range technical team advisors use the NRA range source book as their bible, which Mr. Sands referenced extensively in his appeal. Their assessments are based on contents of this referenced extensively in his appeal. Their assessments are based on contents of this manual. Further, after being reviewed by a supervisor, reports are sent to the NRA headquarters where they are again reviewed by full-time employees, i.e. professionals, highly trained in range issues, who have duties of making changes to the NRA range source manual, which again, Mr. Sands extensively references in his appeal. Supervisor RADA's often attend most, if not all, training conferences every year. We believe Mr. Sands' claims of RADA inaccuracy to be unfounded." Item 3B. "The items Mr. Sands calls questionable that are not addressed in the report would seem to not be areas of concern to a trained expert from the NRA. Nonetheless, we refute them in the following paragraphs. Concrete paths were examined by the RADA as evidenced by photos in the NRA range technical team report. These paths apparently did not raise concerns in the RADA's mind. Secondarily, there is no evidence of projectiles striking walkways. The concrete under the target is protected by earth burms we put in place to protect our targets' cameras approximately eight years ago. The front of the concrete under the targets is also at grade level. There are openings at the end of the west of the burms on both 100 and 200-yard ranges. We access these ranges with heavy equipment, such as a payload or dump truck or skid steer, to perform maintenance on the burms and backstops. Access to inside of the range with heavy equipment is essential to maintain the safety of our range. There is no angle from any bench on the 100 or 200-yard line that would permit a shooter to shoot out of the range past the backstops. We have not observed rocks or concrete larger than maximum specified in the NRA range source book in our backstops. Our backstops are covered above the firing line as seen from the shooting benches on each range. Adding sand above the point is clearly excessive as a shooter cannot hit above this point shooting from the benches. The range source book specifies a maximum size of allowable solids in backstops, not a minimum. We believe it is naturally obvious the smaller the material in the backstop, the less likely a bullet to ricochet. We do not want to increase the chance of a ricochet by increasing the size of the material on our backstops to address Mr. Sands' concerns. The RADA did not object to the material Mr. Sands calls granite dust. The RADA who does evaluations across the country did tell me that the material was great and he's never seen it before. Only the backstops in the 200-yard range are less than 20 feet high. The concrete tunnel on the 200-yard line and the existing baffles prohibit shooting above the current level of the backstops when shooting from the benches. The tunnel was intentionally made lower than the tunnels on the 25 and the 100-yard lines because of the lower height of the 200-yard backstop. Mr. Sands is not looking at the cohesive nature and safety features we have implemented, instead taking individual parts out of context. The NRA range source book current edition states, "Height of the backstop is site-specific and can be up to 20 feet high." The key word is "up to." Steve Davis took a class with the RADA in 2007 and again in 2015. The RADA was also the supervisor for one of the range evaluations done by Mr. Davis around 2017. This is the only contact they have had after the evaluation of the RADA report were completed for the Garrettson Sportsman Club. The RADA was unaware Mr. Davis was involved in any way prior to the 2023 evaluation. Item four. "It should be noted Mr. Sands stated in his commission meeting, he does not desire to see the range shut down. He did request that our CUP be revoked and says in his appeal he would have requested it be denied in the first place. It is not clear how this is functionally different than having it shut down. We followed all the requirements given to us by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time the range was built. We believe Mr. Sands deals with engineers regularly and his day job is branch manager of Olympic Wall Systems, but do not claim this is fact. We expect a professional engineer certification for plans is required for the type of work his company does. This however is not, this is not now and was not at the time of our original CUP, a federal, state, county, or township requirement for gun range. We believe trying to claim we should follow the requirements he, follow the requirements he may have to follow is unreasonable. In expressing his opinion, Mr. Sands is ignoring all the safety features that have been put in place on our range over the years. Belittling our range and calling it a do-it-yourself range is inaccurate. We have range officers present on Saturday and Sunday, April through November. After Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Mr. Sands publicly stated he was unaware of this. Saturday and Sunday comprises of 85% to 95% of our usage of our range. The comprehensive safety features of our range have proven to be adequate for the limited use on other days. The short days, frigid weather, snow, and lack of hunting season between December and March stop most shooters from shooting weekdays or at all. As a result, our range seldom is used during this time." Item four. "We have signage and safety notices and policies posted at the range, various places. We have flashing lights above the benches to notify others when someone is downrange. The largest use of the range is in October, November, when big game hunters come to the site in their rifles. We are already working on written safety policies as required by the amended CUP for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting." Item four. "Bump stocks are currently illegal, so are not permitted. Explosives are not permitted, nor are steel targets at our range. Paper targets only. We admit to being perplexed by the suggestion of a 6,000-yard limit to any firearm. 6,000 yards would seem to be arbitrary. We are unaware of anyone testing the maximum range of a cartridge other than the U.S. Army Aberdeen Proving Grounds. Many modern cartridges not used by military have not been tested. It would be unthinkably safe to attempt to verify the range of any rifle, let alone our property. Even though we did test to make sure our backstops were able to stop an armor-piercing round from a 50 caliber BMG, we prohibit the use on our range. This round is documented to travel more than 6,000 yards. We suspect this item is an effort to prohibit the use of large Magnum rifles." A written maintenance plan is already a component of the updated CUP from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on August 28, 2023. Although we do not currently have a written maintenance plan, we engage in regular maintenance and improvements. Our conditional, our continual improvement of the range is not acknowledged by Mr. Sands. The club has liability insurance to protect our board, our members, guests at our range, our facilities, our neighbors, and general public. We have had liability insurance since 2006 on the rifle range. Conclusion. "We believe we have demonstrated our past and continuing commitment to provide a safe, affordable, and accessible range for the enjoyment of the public training by security firms, law enforcement, firearm training by game fish and park staff, hunt safe classes, and other public and private groups and organizations. This belief is verified by the expert assessment contained in the NRA range technical team report. We believe we have demonstrated our commitment and continually improve the safety of our range by immediately addressing any deficiencies brought to our attention internally or by external source. This is beyond improvements we implement on our own. Mr. Sands repeatedly references the NRA range source manual. This manual clearly identifies itself as possible guidelines containing standard industry practices, not federal, state, or local laws or regulations. At the same time, he questions the expertise of the range technical team advisors who use this source book as their sole source for range evaluations." That is all, unless anybody has questions for me.
Any questions? All right, thank you. I'm assuming you were speaking on behalf of all proponents. Is there anybody else for the proponents? Please don't repeat anything that was just said. Thank you.
Chuck Brown. It come to my attention the other day, I don't think Dan, I mean, Mr. Sands is aware that the neighbor to the north of the club has a 400-yard rifle range, and he also shoots steel plates on his farm. On Saturday, September 9, at 9:02, Mr. Sands sent me a text that said, quote, "My wife and I heard shots from the gun club tonight at about 8:45. Sounded like small caliber shooting steel targets. I went up there but did not see anything, just people having a party," end of quote. It just happens that we were having our trap shooting banquet there. There was no shooting of guns at the banquet. We also heard the shooting, which was coming from the farmer north of the club. I don't know how many times maybe Dean has heard shots, thinking it was coming from the club, and it was actually coming from the neighbor. So I don't know how the county could put more restrictions on us when we haven't proved, we haven't done anything wrong. In fact, we have proven that we've done the right thing by hiring a professional assessment, that we hired, and arrange, and planning and zoning board also agreed with one, with what we have presented to them. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, I'll give the opponents a chance to speak. Is there anyone here for the opponents who would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Dean Sands, 25531 486th Avenue, Garrettson. I don't want to go through item and item. The fact is, is that over the years, and I've documented in your packet there, that I've heard four different times where I've heard ricochets, and then there's been two times where the club talked about it in their meeting minutes back in 2017. And yet, that range assessment says that they're very unlikely to happen. And while I can't prove, because I haven't been struck, my buildings haven't been struck by a bullet yet, you've got bullets that are designed to travel at 3,000 feet per second at the rifle range quite often. And they ricochet, and I hear them. I don't know if it's a second, a second and a half, and then they die. Well, those bullets are traveling at least another 1,500 feet. I don't know in which direction, when you hear them travel that long. I'm roughly about 1,000 feet. My home is roughly about 1,000 feet from the end of the range. And that's where my concern is. Unlikely, and I refute any notion that I said there was zero chance that I'd get struck, and I don't remember saying that. That's why I'm here. I am concerned for that. I feel, and I think that I was wronged in this original conditional use permit that came about in 2006. I was never notified. In fact, it's just this year that I learned that there's a process to come before the county and the Planning Commission. Otherwise, I probably would have done that sooner. Now, the last ricochet that I heard was in April of this year, and that's what started the process. The club, over the years, has made improvements to their range. I'll admit that. The club started out as burms and an open end where they shoot from. There was no baffles. There was, there was no concrete overhead to keep the blue sky down. All those things developed over time. And they're all good things that have been happening. But still, as of last April, I heard ricochets, and in my belief, they've left the range, even with all those improvements. And that is why I ask for an engineer to look at it. And the improvements that have been made have been reactions to safety situations. It started out as an open range that anybody could drive up to and shoot if they weren't stopped from doing that. And since that, since then, they've added the doors to the range and the enclosures. Another time, they added the baffles. I think another time, they increased the height of the burms. I think another time, they, another time, they paved the parking lot. And then after that, they added the concrete over the, over the shooting areas. And to me, that's always, they've never had anyone do a comprehensive plan to stop the bullets from leaving their range. And I'm not concerned about the shots that are shot straight. It's the glancing blows. All these, most of the safety precautions that I've seen are designed to keep the bullets from leaving the gun and shooting through the blue sky. The ones that I'm concerned about are the ones that strike in front of the backstops that could escape from underneath or from hitting the ground and go off that way. And the biggest thing is probably the backstops themselves. That when I've been with Chuck, we've seen the concrete, and he's pointed out the concrete that is in those burms. Now, they've added 12 inches of the granite dust, as I call it, or the quartzite dust, maybe it'd be more accurate. I'm sure that helps, but they've added 12 inches. The source book is calling for 24 to 24 inches in their drawings, anyway. I, I tried to work with the club over the years in this. And I, they said, as I'm honorable person, I believe them as a group are honorable too, but they have different motivations. I live there. My family lives there. My property's there. I'm talking about life safety issues. And I, the likelihood of me getting hit by a bullet is small, but it's still there. And every, and every time that I hear a ricochet and I don't get hit, I feel lucky. So in the end of my appeal, I asked, those are really things that would make me satisfied, that the range has done everything that they can do to stop the bullets. And if they can't stop the bullets from leaving the range, then I don't think they should be allowed to continue on with the conditional use permit. But there are certainly many safety issues and items that could be addressed, and they are working on some of those. And then when I look at the, the conditional use permit that was granted for the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, there's 16 conditions. Many of them don't apply. You know, I've never, one of them was like not having a rec card on your property. Well, I've never had a problem with, with that here. But there are conditions that are spoke of that a full-time range officer during all shooting hours, that's brought up in three different conditions there. This, this conditional use permits even limits the amount of days that they can be open. And I think it's odd that one set of citizens a few miles away have more protection against a rifle range than I do from a range that's, that sits on top of a hill and has no natural barriers to help, help block the bullets as, as the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club does. I thank you for your consideration, and I'm available for questions if anyone asks.
All right, any questions, Mr. Sands? All right, thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak in opposition on this matter? Okay, seeing none. I'll give the proponents an opportunity for a rebuttal if they'd like one. Okay.
Rodney Larson, 6610 North 10th Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We've got some South Dakota We've got some South Dakota codified laws. There's seven of them. They're labeled as gun range protection statutes. The numbers are 2110, 28 through 34. They are, I'm not going to read them to you. They're pretty short and brief, but I'd like you to make sure and review those before you make a decision that would potentially conflict with the laws that are already in place. Can I give this to you or do you just?
You can give it to staff. I don't quite understand your, the point you're trying to make right now.
There's existing South Dakota state laws that protect gun clubs from a lot of the stuff that we discussed today, from neighbors complaining. Quite honestly, there's enough people that have opposition to guns, and if, if all they had to do was hear or make a claim of hearing a ricochet, there wouldn't be a gun club open in the United States. But anyway, so every state has gun protection statutes. This just comes right off the internet, and there's seven current South Dakota gun protection statutes that deserve some consideration before making a decision on today's stuff.
Okay, you can go ahead and provide it to our staff. Thank you.
I have more comments. Could you do any more?
All right, so that's our rebuttal. Anybody else? Okay, I will turn it over to the commission for questions or discussion. Commissioner Benega.
Just have, excuse me, I just have one question for the gun club. Have you had any conversations with a neighbor that lives next door that's supposedly shooting? Do you know what he's shooting or she's shooting or whatever? Have you ever had any conversations or heard anything when everybody else was out there?
You'll have to come up to the mic and answer the question, please. Thank you.
My name is Dean Finch. I live in Brandon. And last weekend, I was working as one of the range officers. And 6:30 when I was closing, anywhere from 10 after 6 to 6:30, I could hear the neighbor to the north shooting. He's got metal plates out there. He shoots out with a 22. He also has a range out further in his field that he shoots with his high-powered rifle. And I'd hear her shooting from his high-powered rifle also. And in regards to ricochet, I think if you looked up on ricochets, they lose about 35% of their power when they ricochet off just about any object. So, that's something else that I'd say.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Kiple.
Madam Chair, this is another one we got to hear at the planning commission level. I appreciate Mr. Sands bringing forward his concerns. I was a little skeptical at first, but I was glad my planning commission colleagues did recall the CUP and have the hearing. I think we got to hear from both sides that way, and I definitely learned a lot. And I think it did spur on a, a good faith effort from the gun club to look at their own activities. And I think adding the additional condition that they essentially, consistent with the NRA review and recommendations, put some of their policies into writing. I, I just think the, the planning commission did a good job here of hearing out both sides and being constructive about this. So I'm inclined to just support the decision of the, the planning commission to continue the conditional use permit, but just with that one extra condition.
All right, anyone else? Is there a motion?
I'll make that my motion.
There's a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kiple.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Flyenberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, I would like to announce, and this is, I feel a little foolish doing this because the people I really want to address can't apparently hear us. We are having some issues with sound on this broadcast. A video recording of the meeting will be available today after the county's meeting. So if you go home and you hear any of your friends asking why they could see us but not hear us, we are having some technical difficulties this morning that we're trying to address. So, all right, that takes us to item 11. We'll, we'll consider a motion to approve the preliminary plan number 23-02 for High Prairie Ranch Edition in Section 9 TD 102 North, Range 49 West. Kevin, good morning.
Yes, good morning again. I'm Kevin Hookman. This request is made by Dave Rogness, submitted a preliminary subdivision plan for Lot 20 of High Prairie Ranch Edition. The site has shown on the, the overhead there, it has five residential lots, approximately 1.7 to 2.8 acres in size. The county commission and county, excuse me, the planning commission and county commission must approve all preliminary subdivision plans. The planning commission reviewed this on August 28th and unanimously recommended approval. You'll see here that in the plan, maybe the next one has a little bit better view. Here we go. That the plan, there is already this existing haystack place that loops around this, it's kind of a hill here. There would be an additional road that would flow through the subdivision, kind of at the ridge line. And then you can see the, the five lots here. The location is kind of to the northeast of the Crooks Renner exit. The High Prairie Ranch Edition has another subdivision further south of this location with another approximately 12 more houses. The action should be taken to approve, deny, or amend the, the preliminary plan, and I'm here for any questions.
Questions for Kevin. All right, is there any public comment on this item this morning? Anybody here for public comment on this item? All right, seeing none. Turn it over for commission discussion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 12, which is to authorize the chair to sign the 2024 LMPG sub-recipient agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. Jason Gierman.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. This is something we do every year. It's the Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. And basically what this does, it funds part of mine and the assistance salaries. There are certain requirements we have to do, and I know many of you are familiar with them, is you have to sign off on, on some of the tasks that are done throughout the year. So what we're doing is requesting to renew this again to accept the funding.
All right, any questions for Jason? Anyone for public comment on this item today? All right, I'll turn over the commission for discussion or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Flyenberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here this morning. Takes us to item 13, which is to authorize the highway department to award a bid to I State Truck Center and purchase a new 2024 Azuzu NPR chassis to be outfitted to be used for weed spraying. Jacob, good morning.
Morning, Commissioner. Jacob, ours, Highway Department. On August 30th, we received one bid for our Azuzu chassis for, for weed spraying. This replaces a 2003 F-350 that we're currently using as a spray truck. The Azuzu is a, is a cab over chassis, so you can have better visibility of exactly where you're spraying. In addition to this cost, there is an additional cost which we will procure at a later time for a flatbed and spray equipment to attach to this truck as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jacob? Any public comment on this item? All right, look for motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kiple.
Aye.
Flyenberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 14, which is to consider a resolution to declare highway department's scrap iron material as surplus and authorize disposal by recycling. Good morning.
Morning. So, this item is, is more or less the, the recycling material that we accumulate through construction projects, picking up debris within the ditches. And at a certain point throughout the year, we, we have to recycle it or dispose of it.
Questions for Jacob? You didn't bring any pictures in for us.
I don't have any pictures, no. You're more than welcome to come out to the highway shop.
Any public comment on this item? All right, I turn it over to the commission for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Flyenberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 15, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign the professional services agreement with Stantec Consulting Services, Inc. for pavement management services. Jacob.
This agreement with Stantec is supported financially by our MPO. A portion of our road system is within the MPO, and they, they cost share our, our planning efforts towards that, towards this project. Every three years, we have done a survey of our roadways to determine the condition. And the condition of the specific road sections allow us to come up with a strategic plan to either microsurface, chip seal, crack seal, overlay, or allow it to go down the road where it needs to be reconstructed someday in the future. So, this is a, a document that'll, that'll help us appropriately use our funds.
Okay. Questions for Jacob? Does the MPO pick the consultant, then?
So, it's, it's a joint effort. The, the county put out an advertisement for consultants. We received two proposals back, and then it was a joint, a joint effort to review the proposals between the county, the MPO, and the state of South Dakota to, to come up with an agreement on who we were going to move forward with.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone for public comment on this item today? All right, any further questions from the commission or a motion?
I'll, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 16. Consider a motion to approve the Minnehaha County Tax Deed Surplus Property Appraisal Board report. Leah Anderson, our auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. Leah Anderson, auditor. And so, yes, our appraisal board met on September 7th, which was a Thursday. We went out and viewed each of the properties and came, they came up with some appraisal board values. Also, on the report, which was included, has a little bit of description. And so I'm just asking for approval for that report. Or if you have any questions, I can answer.
Any questions for Leah? Any public comment on this item today? All right, seeing none. Turn it over to the commission for further questions or a motion.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Flyenberg, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious, do the values, are they based on just a straight appraisal, or is there any consideration of back taxes that are due in that value?
Well, this board is made up of property owners that live within our county, and so they are not professional appraisal, appraisers by any means. And I think that's, that's what statute calls for, is either property owner board or professional appraiser to be hired by the governing board, which would be you guys. So, these values are really observations of the condition of the property. We're not allowed to go inside the property, so these values are not taking anything into consideration on the inside of the property. Some of the properties are, the homes have already been demolished, so there are chances that the taxes and interest owed are higher than the value of that lot in a couple of the cases. And in some cases, the homes are in very poor condition from the outside, and then you can see that likely there is damage on the inside as well, when the roof is damaged or the windows are broken. So, these are not professional amounts by any means.
So would it be correct to say that these prices don't have anything to do with the amount of taxes that are owed to the county?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the Tax Deed Surplus Appraisal Board's report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Flyenberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 17. Is consider a motion to authorize the auditor to use public surplus online auction for the sale of the Minnehaha County tax deed properties declared a surplus. Leah Anderson.
Good morning, again, Leah Anderson. So I was made aware of an option that the counties could use, which was, is called public surplus online auction. This is a program that was made aware to the auditors through SEDECO, the South Dakota Association of County Officials and Auditors. And I did detail out some benefits of using this option. But the reason for my, for asking for your approval on this is, next week, when I come to you with the notice that we have to public, publish in the paper, we will need to include the details of this. And so that's why I was presenting this information to you. Some of the main benefits of getting this started this year is, while it's taken a lot of time to research and talk with state's attorney's office about to make sure that everything would be appropriate, we, once we have this in place, we would be able to more easily hold tax sales in our busy election years. So traditionally, we've done these tax sales about every other year, so then we get a little behind on these properties. So this would allow us next year to easily be able to list these properties. It also does due diligence for us in trying to get the best bid on the properties by expanding the audience and making it more available for people to bid on these properties. And I can answer any other questions you might have too.
Any questions for the auditor? Commissioner Flyenberg.
Thank you. Have you heard of any other counties from the convention that are starting to use this?
Well, this is a nationwide group that supports only government entities. I do not know specifically which counties, I do know other counties in our state are going to this method, but I don't know which counties are at this point.
I generally like the idea of making things more accessible, but after just looking it over a little bit, it didn't look like there was a lot of other sales or maybe any other sales yet in South Dakota. So I was curious, you had mentioned that they would help with advertising, I think?
Yeah, I mean, they have a pool of people that they reach out to. And then we would also be advertising this through our publication. And we have a list of, of people that contact our office that want to be notified of these sales, and so we will be reaching out to them as well via email to let them know of the plan of how we would be doing the sale.
And then just one final question, if I could. Having never attended an auction before like this, is it reasonable to think that the people who usually attend would be, have access to the internet, to, to the app, to be able to participate? Or is it more local? I hope that question isn't offensive to anybody, just wondering if, if the buyers would be able to still use this platform, or if we'd be disadvantaging anyone?
Yeah, so that, that's a good, we talked about that question upfront, like is there going to be anyone that feels like they are unable to participate? We were, we plan to make every effort we can to assist them to find a way to access a computer or their smartphone, if they have one. The, the libraries have public computers that people can use, friends. And then public surplus does offer a support team for buyers in order to get them set up to use the system. Part of doing our publication and notifying our potential buyers would be to make sure that they have all the information that they need going forward.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Kiple.
Just, I know this is your first time through this, and I know we kind of have done this traditionally in the odd years. Can you just expand upon that a little bit? How, how much bandwidth has this taken from your office this year? And, and do you think as soon as next year, you might just make this an annual? Just expand upon that idea a little bit?
Mm-hmm. So far for our office, it's only been occupying my staff, or my time, not the staff's time. So far for our office, it's only been occupying my staff or my time, not the staff's time. I've been communicating with Chris in the Treasurer's Office and Maggie from State's Attorney's Office to talk through some of the options that we have to make decisions on. And so the, thinking back to your question, my, the staff time in a traditional cell where we, we would conduct that on a Saturday for a live auction. And that does take extra staff time. So I would have to probably have about, you know, four to six staff people come in to help with that sale. It also occupies time from the Sheriff's Department and other departments that have to participate on that Saturday. So going forward, I would see that even next year in twenty-four, that we would be able to conduct a sale right away. Because a lot of the legwork will be done this year in getting things set up. The other benefit with this online option is that we can post current pictures of the properties, just the outside, of course, so that people can see these photos without going to the property and walking around. So I took photos on September seventh when we were out.
Sure, yeah, just, I just understand that obviously twelve months from now, we'll be in an election cycle. And so obviously, you're balancing those interests as well. So I tend to think that if this could be done in an annual basis, we'd, we'd stay up with it. And it would have some benefits. But don't have a strong opinion either way right now, but interested, glad you're looking into it. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Blyenberg.
Just one more thing that I hadn't thought of in advance. Just curious, do any other counties, are we able to have a local contract with an auctioneer to take away some of the legwork from your department, you know, with a professional auctioneer? And if so, cost wise, is that more beneficial?
I don't know what a professional auctioneer would cost. We don't pay for this service. So if we use the online auction option, there is no additional fee to the county. That, all of their fees are covered by the buyer. So there's what's called a buyer's premium. And they pay that separate from the, the property price. If we hire an auctioneer, we would have to cover that cost. We also would have to have staff here for that live auction because they would do that here in the commission room on a Saturday. So even with a professional auctioneer, I believe that it would add to the cost and the time. And then we would not be able to do these auctions on the even years when we have an election.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Other questions? So I just have one question. So I understand that there aren't people in South Dakota yet that you're aware of that have utilized this service. I was curious whether you were able to talk to somebody in another jurisdiction? If you got some live references where you're able to visit with people to see what the hiccups might be?
Sure. No, I was not able to do that. I did meet with the reps from Public Surplus. We did a Zoom demo call. We've been able to talk with them quite extensively. And then I also was able to go on their site and view other properties that are listed for sale and see kind of what that looks like. And I can reach back out to them and get other references or counties to consult with. But the process seemed very streamlined and they have very good support. So I didn't have any concerns about that.
I just tend to personally not be a pioneer. I would prefer to have somebody else figure out the problems and then try to jump in. And so is it, is it necessary that we have this motion and authorize this today? Or is it possible that we could defer it and perhaps have it on our next meeting agenda and give you some time to, to reach out to some folks to see what experience they've had with this organization?
Yeah. You can defer it. The, the reason I brought it to the attention today is because next week, we were hoping to bring to you the notice that needs to be published for the sale. So as we push that back, it will push out the sale date. And I do know that we, our goal is to have the sale completed prior to November first so that equalization can go through the processes that they need to go through. So we're already a little behind on the sale. So I didn't want to push it out too much further.
Okay. So I'm not quite clear on how that timeframe works out.
We have to have ten days for publishing. So and in the, in one of the publications, we have to do two notices. So we're trying to make that timing work where we can do the publications or the, publish the notices and hold the sale towards the end of October. So we're kind of down to needing to make that publication the first week of October.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Blyenberg.
On the timing question, you were originally hoping to hold the auction on October twenty-four?
Well, if we use the online Public Surplus option, the auction would begin October twenty-fourth at eleven a.m. And it would end on October twenty-fifth at eleven a.m. So we'd have a twenty-four hour bidding window. So that would be ideal.
And would it work for us to defer for a week and push that back a week? It'd still be before the November first deadline, or is that cutting it too close?
That would probably be cutting it close. But if that's the decision that you make, we can extend that, that sale date time.
Madam Chair, can't we just do both next week? Couldn't we defer this one week, presumably approve it and do the notice? Have them both on the agenda or is that, do we have to stagger those?
You can, I can write up two publication notices and you can decide which direction you want to go. If, if the notice to publish is approved next week at the twenty-sixth meeting, we would, we would submit that notice that day. So we would have to have two options available for you. So that would be an option.
And I presume you're going to bring back good information. Otherwise, you would want to be revising that yourself if you heard otherwise. So I guess that's my motion is to defer this item to next Tuesday.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Morning.
I was going to speak at public comment for something else, but when this came up, I will appraise you with the fact that no county commissioner can buy any property that is surplus. Personal, as such as this, on the public auction. Because I bought pieces of property at public auction pitting against the general public. And David Nelson, I would say, misinterpreted part of the law. There was a sweetheart deal at one time between the county commissioner and the auditor in Brown County. The auditor would see the, the property coming up for sale. The county commissioner would buy it at three years and ten months or one month or whatever. And it was the state law says it wasn't clarified. I bought it at public auction and I lost three pieces of property. And I challenged the, the state's attorney. But when you raise the ire of the state's attorney for working the budget, you suffer in the long haul. You cannot buy it. And I didn't want to take it to the Supreme Court because I knew too many people on the Supreme Court at the time. So be aware, even if it's public auction, county commissioners, while seated, cannot own, cannot buy property at public auction.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? On this item? All right, we had a motion and a second to defer one week. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eighteen, which is the Fiscal Year 2024 Final Budget Briefing. Susan Beeman, good morning.
Good morning, Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. Just here today to do one final briefing before next week's meeting where you will be asked to adopt the Fiscal Year 2024 budget. We'll go through the, the slides on the presentation. So as we go down a little bit here. Let's resize this a little bit. We thought it would be good to just review where we've been. It seems like we've been talking about the budget for a while. And that's because we have been. So we started way back earlier this year during the department presentations. And then the departments have been working on it. We've had budget meetings throughout the summer. So we're now over here on the second to last timeline that we identified for this final briefing. So we also wanted to just kind of remind you as the Commission just some of the challenges we've discussed over these last few months as, as are important for you to keep in mind as we go through these final steps. So these are all reminders and review from previous meetings. So firstly, you know, we've discussed the need for expansion in the jail into the unit control three to meet the needs of the growing jail population. Secondly, we have continuing staffing needs related to public safety-related departments, such as the state's attorney, the jail sheriff's office, public defender, public advocate. Those continue to happen and, and we don't see that changing in the future. We are aware on item number three, the need to maintain adequate unapplied cash balances to preserve our bond rating so that any future debt borrowings are at a favorable rate to our, to the county. Item four, just also a reminder about the, the cap on CPI at three percent is problematic in these years where inflation are quite a bit higher than three percent. So for this formula year, if we would have done actual CPI, that would have been eight and a half percent. So we are capped at three percent in our property tax formula. And then lastly, as we've discussed numerous times, ARPA funds are providing us much needed financial support. But we do know that those are going to be expiring in the upcoming years as we expend those dollars. So we need to be very careful in how we plan for that and be prepared for that. So as we discuss and go through just the changes from what you have seen from provisional budget to today, we went through this slide last meeting. The only change that has been made to these slides are related to general tax revenue growth and CPI utility adjustments. So that's the property tax calculations. As we had discussed on our last meeting, we were waiting on numbers to run through our calculations related to those final numbers that we didn't get from the state till the end of August. So now we've had that chance to run through that data and push that through the, our, our tax software to understand what that does to our tax values and such. So the changes you see to the general fund is an additional eight thousand one hundred and twelve dollars in property tax revenue. All other expenditure changes are the same as what you saw last time. Rural Access Fund, we discussed last time, no change to that one. Building Fund had an additional six hundred and seventy dollars in property tax revenue. And then Library Fund had an additional eight hundred and thirty-two dollars in property tax revenue. And the Fire Fund had three hundred and forty dollars in tax revenue. And how, we have an adjustment on how we pay that out to the fire departments of six hundred and ten. So those are the changes that, from provisional budget to today and amongst the changes from last week as well. I'll just pause there to see if you have any questions before we go forward. Okay. And then next is just the updated means of finance. This is the, essentially the budget with all of the funds on it. Again, it includes the changes from what you just saw on those adjusting schedules. So this would be what you would be asked to approve next week. I won't go through all of these in detail since I know we have covered them extensively in prior conversations. And then lastly is the calculation of Minnehaha County property tax levies. And I just want to make sure that we are clear, these are just county service levies. This is not encompassing all of the tax levies that go into a taxpayer's calculation because that includes municipalities, school districts, townships, et cetera. So that, these are just representing general fund, building fund, and bond fund. So you can see, this is a little bit small here on some of these slides, so I'll make it a little bit bigger. Our levy for those three funds is a slight decrease from prior year of three point zero three six. It's approximately a one percent decrease in levy from prior year.
Can you translate that for a taxpayer so they understand what that means to them for purposes of their taxes that they pay?
Certainly, the levy is taken against the value of the property. So they take your assessed value of your property and that's per one thousand dollar of your value. So three hundred thousand divided by one thousand times the levy is how that works.
So for purposes of somebody who owns a house, the value did not change from the year prior? And just for the portion of your taxes that go to Minnehaha County, the levies have gone down?
Correct, so if your value
Sorry, I feel like the mic was off. I mean, if your property value stayed the same, which is a big if in our market, I understand. But the percentage of your taxes that only go to Minnehaha County, because our property taxes go to lots of different governmental entities, our percentage of taxes went down.
Correct.
The levy equals what we ask you for taxes.
Correct, it takes the, the, the values of the property in Minnehaha County and the property tax revenue that we need. And that's the, that's what goes into the formula. So if a taxpayer's value did not change from last year to this year, then you are correct that they would not be seeing an increase in that tax. But very simply stated, yes.
Yeah, it's very complicated, but I just want taxpayers to understand if your tax bill goes up, either your property value, your tax bill went up, either your property value went up or it's some other governmental entity that's getting more money from us. We are really working hard to manage how, how we assess taxes here at Minnehaha County.
And you can see on this, on this slide here, you know, the, the general fund levy has the decrease. Building Fund is staying fairly constant. And you can see the big jump in the bond fund. And that's related to the Juvenile Justice Center financing that was new for 2024.
And are all three of those items considered into that levy amount on the top of the line?
Those three funds are what make up that three point zero three six.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And Susan, could you describe in just broad terms what proportion is opt-out authorized? Is that like that blue bar, some percentage of it roughly is allowed by the state, if you will? And then we've had to affirmatively opt out for some proportion of it as well?
Correct, so that's some numbers here. Fifty-eight point eight million is our property tax revenue for current taxes for general fund. Of that fifty-eight point eight million, fifteen point five million is opt out, which is roughly twenty-six percent.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Susan? All right, is there anybody for public comment on this budget briefing? All right, seeing none. Thank you once again for your hard work in all of this. All right, that takes us to item nineteen, which is to authorize the Chair to sign a letter of notice to terminate the JDC Joint Powers Agreement. Tyler, good morning.
Good morning, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. So for your consideration is what I would call a unique request. So in nineteen ninety-five, Minnehaha County and thirteen other counties formed a joint powers agreement that was under the intent to provide a services and facilities for juvenile detention. That agreement was for twenty years. And the primary purpose that I understand it as was to help finance two point five million bond issues to add a remodel to the current juvenile detention center. That expired in twenty fifteen and then it was renewed for two years. And then twenty seventeen, again for five years. And then again, this, in twenty twenty-two, for another five years. So what the purpose of the agreement is, is to serve as a notice between both Minnehaha County and the fifteen partner counties that, hey, we'd like you to use our facility. And they say, hey, you know what, we'd like to use it too. Effectively does not obligate the counties to anything. That is done through a separate agreement that each county receives, usually November of the year, where the services that JDC provides, along with the annual bed rate is described and each county signs on to that service. and each county signs on to, um, that service. So the indication that we have and the direction we're suggesting is that the current joint powers agreement does not effectively serve a purpose that is not already accomplished through that annual agreement. And the recommendation that we are asking for is that you authorize the chair to sign the attached letter. That would let the partner counties know that we are effectively terminating the agreement on December 31st of this year. Uh, important to point out that we have communicated this direction with our partner counties a few different times, most recently in May, uh, when we provided our most, most recent update to them. So with that, if there's any questions, I can try and answer those.
Questions for Tyler? Tyler, did we receive any response from our letter in May? When we?
We did not.
Okay.
No.
All right, public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment on this item? Right, any commission discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blaenburg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so this is our opportunity for public comment. If you have, um, if you'd like to speak about something that was not on our agenda today, this is your opportunity to come forward and speak. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kay Burkhardt. I come from Valley Springs. There's only two of us here this morning from the carbon dioxide landowners. But we are sent by many, many Haha County farmers that are frantically combining, hopefully to get as much done as they can before Friday when it's going to rain, right? Excuse me. Your hard work on the Minnehaha County ordinances was extremely important in protecting the use of our land. Our future depends on those ordinances. As you know, the PUC is also has concerns about the safety of our families and the development of our land as the CO2 pipelines look for a route through Minnehaha County and other counties in our state. We would like to say thank you, just as emphatically as we said, please help us when we were here last spring. Thank you for all the time you spent hearing our concerns and it did take some time. Thank you for being a leader for other counties by putting reasonable ordinances in place to protect our families and to provide orderly development of our county. Thank you for being courageous enough to pass the ordinances in spite of the possibilities of lawsuits. Thank you to Scott Anderson and to the Planning and Zoning Committee and to the State's Attorney's Office for all of their hard work, sometimes lasting late into the evening. They did a great job. Thank you for sending Alex Hagan to peer during the hearings. He was awesome. I have certainly learned a lot in the past year about our local and state governments. I am amazed at the courage, the work and the time you all commit to your positions to save our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So anyone else for public comment today? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners Joey Hohn from Hartford. And I also am coming to you with much gratitude in our heart, um, for the citizens of Minnehaha County and especially, uh, my family and neighbors. Um, you know, for almost two years, we spent time researching these carbon pipelines because we knew nothing about them. And, uh, you know, this was confirmed by the PUC commissioners that these are unlike any other pipelines that are in our county. They're unlike oil or natural gas. And so, uh, once again, we just appreciate you listening to our concerns, um, coming forth with an intelligent, uh, land use ordinance, taking into concern economic development and, uh, setting an example for other counties, um, that this, you know, that counties do have the right to, uh, put these ordinances forward with setbacks. So thanks again to the State's Attorney's Office. I know they put a lot of time into this. Scott Anderson and his office, uh, the Planning and Zoning Staff, Commission Staff, Tyler, and also we, Alex Hagan did an excellent job representing the county at the PUC hearings. So we thank you for all of that. Um, and thanks again for everything because we really truly appreciate everything that you have done of, on behalf of the constituents of Minnehaha County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else here for public comment? All right, that takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any Commissioner Liaison Reports this morning? Commissioner Blaenburg.
Well, it's unfortunate that Dean isn't here today, um, following up the South Dakota Counties Convention last week. Um, it's my first convention and I learned a lot and got to meet a lot of people that are very involved in counties across the state. Um, really appreciated being able to sit in on the summer study, the last, um, session of that. And also I just wanted to mention that last week, Joe and I had an opportunity to meet with Carrie and, Carrie Benz and Laurie from, uh, Human Services. And just to share that they're, they would like to take a look at rent assistance, utility assistance and how the county, um, provides assistance. And they're just taking a creative look at that to make sure that we're providing relief when it's needed, but also encouraging employment, um, in our community. So that will be coming sometime soon. They'll be asking us to take a look at that.
All right, thank you. Well, just, I'm pretty sure that Commissioner Karski is watching but can't hear us. But I would like to just shout out to him. Um, people may not know, but he's the Chair of the State Association of County Commissioners. So he was in charge of the convention that we had last week, put a lot of work into that. It was, um, it was always well done. And it was really nice to have the legislators present and to have them, um, utilize that time with that constituency present to, um, go through a number of ideas that they're looking at for, um, to address some of the, I think pretty well-recognized at this point, funding issues that the state, um, statutes have in place for kind of hands hamstringing counties, particularly in this inflationary environment. So appreciate the hard work of the legislators as well. All right, anyone else this end? Commissioner Kipli.
Yes, I'd echo those sentiments and, and maybe put a bug in the ear for Tyler, Tom. Tyler did a great job summarizing, I think there were 23 different items that the, the legislators voted on. And, and so we might want to, uh, before sometime between now and legislative session, maybe have a discussion as a body about what those were and if we'd want to, uh, put our weight behind any of those recommendations as Minnehaha County to ask our legislators to, to advocate for that. But yeah, Dean did a great job with that event. And obviously that was my first time attending as well with Jen. I, my one liaison report, I think of note is a couple of things coming out of our, uh, relationship with the courthouse and the judiciary. So Judge Howman and her administrator, Carl, was able to have a, a couple of conversations with their staff. Um, it's kind of an interesting aspect, maybe you don't give a lot of thought to. But, uh, when someone's accused of a crime and they put a cash bond up and then they never show up again, what happens to that money? And, uh, if we follow the right procedures, it looks like, uh, we could have a judge, uh, issue basically a forfeiture notice and presumably the defendant would not show up for that as well. And there'd be a default judgment and that money would go to the county rather than to the state. So kind of looking into some of the procedures there, the State's Attorney's Office has been helpful with some of that. I think we can get some of the low hanging fruit and then, uh, looking back and also prospectively, uh, try to, uh, just adjudicate those dollars correctly. And then those could actually come back to the county, not talking huge millions of dollars, but into the tens of thousands of dollars each year, uh, that, uh, we could do something with. And then also I think we're going to talk next week at Building Committee, but Judge Howman's bringing up different building projects that, uh, need some updating in the, uh, the courthouse. So I think we'll have further discussions next week on some construction projects there. And I think that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so that takes us to non-commissioned discussion. Is there any non-action commission discussion? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We are not going to have exact today.
Yep, I'd make a motion to adjourn then.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming, everyone.